Ready?
Oh, we should start this one too. Sue, did you start that one?
I did.
Okay. I didn't see you hiding behind the monitor, sorry.
I'm gonna call the Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting of October 8th to order. Can I have roll call?
Dee Benedetto?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Fousey?
That's you, that's you Foizie.
Yeah, I think maybe, I'm here.
Eccles Bell?
Here.
Topin?
Here.
Gray?
I thought I saw him come in.
He's, he was gonna be, he wasn't available this week or next, or for this meeting or the next meeting.
So, excused.
Roberts?
Here.
Hank?
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for September 26th, 2025?
I move to approve the minutes of September 26th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on corrections or additions or?
Down here.
Yes.
Sue?
Spelling Christina Tiana. I have a copy if anybody wants to replace it. It's under item six.
What's the correct spelling?
D H R I S T I N A U U I J A N O.
And he got that wrong?
Well, they spelled it with K.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So now it's recorded and they can fix it.
Did, did you get that Jeremy?
I, I mean, I didn't get all those letters, but it should be in the recording and I'll make a note in the minutes to update.
Any other comments? Can I have a roll call for approval of the minutes?
Uh, Roberts?
Yes.
Gray? Oh, that's right, they're not here. Topin?
Here, or yeah.
Eccles Bell?
Probably not here, but yes.
Fousey?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Dee Benedetto?
Yes.
Hey?
All right, next on the agenda is Communications from the Board and Council. Urban Renewal Agency update. We haven't met, our next meeting is Monday, I believe. So, I'll go on to the City Council rep.
Also have not met, will be meeting next Tuesday.
And County Representative?
I wasn't here the last time, so we're just going through our growth policy. And I think Mr. Mayor, was there a question about sharing our info with the county?
Say again the first part?
Just working maybe together with us going over our growth policy. I think we want to go through subdivision regulations as well through the county.
I, I remember a little bit of the conversation, but I'm missing the ask here, just that, that there's a desire to work together and there will be reaching out on both sides in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Will that be any communication with the Board or primarily just with the city staff?
Which would you like?
Both. Don't, don't choose.
I mean, I think it's good that I'm attending both sides and I think that I can let you guys know when I think there might be a time and a place for us.
And that was my understanding, this conversation was kind of board to board, just like we did when we were going over ours, that we are, they will reach out to us. Our response was cool.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, I suspect probably primary interest would be anything that would affect the future land use.
Yes.
Area around Red Lodge.
Yes. Sure, sure.
All right. Communication from the Mayor?
None at this time, there, there's a question that will last formally on the record about propane tanks, but we'll do that at the end under communications.
All right.
I will offer one additional update. The public hearing, or the public comment time period for the Rocky Fork Inn closes Friday. That gives us all weekend to hide the bodies if there's any complaints or anybody who wants us not to proceed with tearing that down and then on Monday we'll issue a notice to proceed.
And then what happens? So on Monday, they eliminate?
On, on, I, I believe they're gonna be staging equipment, so there will be some stuff that happens, starts happening on Monday, but I think it'll be probably the following week before you see an empty space.
I have, you say the 14th?
Are those?
And it's gonna be a week, it's gonna be a week later than that because they're gonna be moving equipment that week, so it's just kind of how it fit in with their other jobs.
You said the deadline is Friday?
Deadline is Friday.
And?
And to my awareness, we have received no public comment opposing the destruction of the building at this point.
Are the documents for review available on the, on the website?
They're, they're at the, at the front, at the front desk, I think, is what we published. I don't know that they're all available on the website.
All right, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to new business. We have a public hearing for conditional use permit. Application for development of multifamily apartment units with four units per structure. On lot, lot 108 of block three of Red Lodge Country Club Estates, generally located at 108 Silver Circle, Red Lodge, Montana. In the, in the high density residential R4 zoning district. So I think I'll open up first to get comments from the, Jeremy? If you'd like to go over the staff report and then hear from the developer and then I'll open it up to a public hearing.
Thank you Chair, Board members. Yes, as, as stated, this is the conditional use permit for five fourplex units on property legally described as Red Lodge Country Club Estates, Lot 108, Block 3. At 1403 Silver, Silver Circle in Red Lodge, Montana. Let's see, parking, each building is proposed to be two stories.
Jeremy?
Yeah.
I forgot, I forgot to go over the hearing procedures, so maybe I better do that first. I was paying attention to the, to the agenda and not the rest of it, so. I guess go through, I've already stated the reading of the matter before the Planning Board. Qualifications of the Planning Board, does any member of the Planning Board have any ex parte communication to disclose?
No.
Nope, no.
Does any member feel that they should recuse themselves from participation in the hearing and decision on the matter before the Board?
No, no.
No.
Okay, has the matter been properly noticed as required by the Red Lodge zoning regulations?
Yeah, yes, it has.
Let the record indicate that Red Lodge Planning Board has been called and qualified to hear the matter at hand and that the matter is quasi judicial in nature and has been properly noticed. Now, report on behalf of the city, Jeremy.
Um, all right, so each building is proposed, I'll just continue where I left off. Each building is proposed to two stories. Parking is provided onsite via outdoor off-street parking with ADA accessible spaces.
Good story.
The proposed density for the project is 18.5 units per acre. And it has been reviewed against the density requirements, minimum lot area per unit, and it does meet the, the zoning requirements for R4. So we, staff is proposing 18 conditions to go along with the conditional use permit. So the, the, the recommendation from the Board, or the, the Board would move to first adopt or not adopt the staff report, findings of fact. And then, once you've done that, you would move to approve or deny the conditional use permit. If you do deny, you need to list reasons for the denial for the, the purposes of the findings of fact. I'm not gonna go through the entire staff report, hopefully you have all had an opportunity to read through it. It has been reviewed against the requirements of the zoning regulations. It does comply, there are, the conditions that are required are conditions that are, are things that are required from the zoning regulations as far as the development standards. So for instance, you know, they need to submit a parking plan, a final parking plan for review by the city prior to any building permits. Final landscaping plan to show compliance with the landscaping requirements, those types of things. So, other than that, I will let you guys proceed with the hearing and I'm available for questions.
Thank you Jeremy, do we have a report on behalf of the applicant? State your name and address, please.
Okay, Katie Schwan, address is 56 Vladilla Road in Roberts. 59070, in case you didn't know that. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I'll give you a little background on us and our company and then dive into the details of the project. My name is Katie Schwan, my husband is Larry Schwan, we've had Schwan Construction in this market for over 25 years. Larry was born and raised between here and Roberts and grew up here as a farmer and rancher and started building when he was in high school. And then took on the construction full-time about 25 years ago. So we've been in the Carbon County area and the Red Lodge area building for quite a few years, I've seen many changes. Lots of fun stuff, lots of good stuff, but also, you know, business come and go, people come and go. We can remember when Remington Ranch was just a farm, right? You probably remember that? The ski resort, had two new quads installed, we were here for that. Our kids were born in the old hospital, the last of the kids that were still born in this, in the local market. Dr. George and Dr. Mole were our physicians at the time. So, we have experience with multifamily building construction and single family, of course. We built our first six-plex, which was a Section 8 project in Billings in 2004. And that grew to about 15 units at the time. But back in those days, there were a lot of funding options to help out with the Section 8 program. Those are not all available today. The program that we're proposing is not a Section 8, it's, but it is long-term rentals for just the regular public, you know, the people that live and work here or want to move here. And want to try and raise a family here, among other things. The project itself is like Jeremy already said. Proposal is five fourplexes on the lot. Each unit would have three bedrooms and two bathrooms, full appliances, including washer and dryer. We also have planned for three ADA units, which with their own parking spot, of course. And we have, on the site plan, if, are you gonna bring that up by chance, or do you want to?
Great, I wonder if Jeremy can share. Jeremy, do you have that available where you can share your screen, sir? Yes, are, are we looking for the site plan, is that what you want?
Yes.
Yep, hold on just a second. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you. So, as, as you guys know from last month, Rob Morehead went through a lot of information from a developer's standpoint on his project. And I'll just add a couple of comments to that, he did a good job of explaining the development side of it, the situation. One is that many, many developments in the market have been for sale properties, mostly for sale, whether it's a single family or a town home or a condo for sale. And so there aren't as many long-term rentals that are being developed in the market, which is the, the number one goal of the city planning growth policy, right? So this project helps address that number one goal for long-term rentals. These will not be short-term rentals or VRVOs, they are for residents and to provide an option when they can't afford a $500,000 house, right? I mean, we just, it is said over and over and over and over again. But to add a few notes on that. An additional benefit of a project like this is not only to offer socioeconomic diversity, but fostering, reducing inequality, fostering community. Because we can provide housing for employees in the market so they don't have to commute from lower class areas, Joliet, Roberts, Belfry, Bridger, those types of places. They can just live right here and enjoy, get to enjoy the coolness of the golf course like all the other residents there. We have, there will be a total of 20 dwelling units across the five buildings. 20 dwelling units, according to the American Planning Association, for 20 units per acre is far more efficient than a sprawling subdivision. It reduces infrastructure costs by 25% for, per unit. And per the urban planning research, it also aligns with what they call a smart growth principle endorsed by the American Planning Association. So it is an additional way to help integrate single family and town home and some small, these are considered low-rise. So they're smaller apartment complexes compared to a high-rise in a higher density area. Modern fourplexes are also designed for efficiency because of the shared utilities. Both the EPA and the Urban Institute state that multifamily buildings use 20 to 30% less water and energy per capita. So that's another benefit of having the project as it stands, the way we've proposed it. We also wanted to allow for lots of green space and of course the parking requirement is met, 1.5 spaces per unit. We also have drawn the bike racks, so bike racks is a requirement that we have on there. We've got the garbage bins with lids, those are also requirements. Setbacks are 25 feet from the golf course, 25 feet from the street, six feet from each adjacent property as listed in the regulations. So, we do, you do have some idea here on the site plan of landscaping. We have overstory trees and understory trees as per their requirements. We also have shrubs and other decorative, you know, rocks or things to help aesthetics. So what you can only kind of see on the blue, in the little blue, can you see that, the little blue area? So that's our stormwater drainage plan. So each building will have its own swale, which is designed to mimic a meandering creek. So it's not a straight line, it's not square, it's like a little nice with rock bottom. And each one will hold the stormwater drainage for a building and its corresponding parking lot. We have studied the visual effects of the entrances. One entrance on the right will be a one-way around through the project through the exit on the left. We also submitted the water and septic plant, the city services plan with the application showing we will, we're required to put in some manholes in the septic system, a fire hydrant. In order to address fire concerns from the fire chief. And, let's see, what else can I talk about on the details? We have received approval from the Red Lodge Country Club Estates Organization. And the Architectural Design Review Committee met with me out on the property and looked at everything and sent us their approval. So let's see, I touched on everything I wanted to detail for you, because you have all the details right in your, in front of you. Yes, each unit is three bedroom, two bath. Higher energy, high efficiency appliances, you know, fridge, dishwasher, all those sorts of things. I think that was about it. We have a designated area for snow storage, for snow removal, which is in the greenery of the green space up at the top. The Red Lodge Country Club Estates did ask us if we'd consider putting in some park benches in that area. But I'm talking to them about it because we are getting flying golf balls through there every day. And I feel like that would be a safety hazard, you know, if someone was sitting there on a park bench. So, let's see, oh lighting, I want to talk about lighting. There are four exterior lights on each building. One by each door entrance and also one, there's two on the exterior, which are for the parking lot area. So, the ones, the entrance lights are pretty common, that's a standard, you know, code practice, right? Putting a, a light by your front door. The ones on the outside of the building are actually not required by the regulations. But we feel very strongly that it's a safety concern and so we wanted to have at least the front part of the parking lot illuminated. Like the front half of the spots, so that when people were getting home at the dark, they'd be able to have a little bit of, of that. They, of course, follow all the regulations, so they are fully cut off, fully shielded. Number of lumens meets the requirement. Also, the total number of lumens for the whole project falls within the requirements for total lumens. We also have planned small down facing sidewalk landscaping lights. So, because we have, excuse me, while the lights on the exterior of the building will reach about 12 feet out. So it's gonna cover about the first three or four feet of the parking spaces. We still wanted to be able to have a nice lit up sidewalk for safety but also aesthetics. Those are also downdraft, fully cut off, fully shielded, all those particulars. The sidewalk itself will run all the way across the front of the parking spaces. It will also run up to the building and under the stairs to, so that we can have the ADA access with a slight incline up to the front door on those particular units. Let's see. Lighting, landscaping, storm drainage. I missed anything, Brian? Look at my little tea over there, trees. I think that's it for the presentation of the details that I can add that maybe weren't obvious from the, the packet. Do you have any questions for me? Or?
We will.
Okay.
I think what we'll do is we'll
Gotcha.
Hear from the public and then
Okay.
When it comes back to the Board, we may have some additional questions for you as well as for Jeremy.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks.
Could we have those comments, the, the letters that?
Did you want hard copies of them?
Yes, please.
Can you get them? Oh, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna hand them. Because I don't know that everybody wants them, but if everybody does, I'd be, yes, no, purple?
I have them.
Anybody else want hard copies? One first. If anybody in the audience want mine, you're welcome to have them as well. The rules say we have them available for everybody.
Yeah.
I'm good here.
I want to take one, I don't think.
Good. Yes. So we, we have received, as far as I know, just the three written comments.
There's five actually.
Oh, there's five?
Oh, then there's.
Then there's, I don't have the other two.
Yep, yes.
It looks like they're all Lodge Lane, all Mob Lodges.
I'll just pick off yours if I don't. We'll share.
I'll share.
All Mob Lodges.
Well, they came in this morning, so.
Yeah, you might not have seen it yet.
No, I got it. My mom made the rounds in me though.
Ready to go.
I think they're in chromological order, but.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing. Each person has three minutes to respond. If you have comments, please step up to the podium, state your name and residence. After the public hearing is closed, all the discussion will come back to the Board and all discussion will be with the Board and or with the applicant or with Jeremy. But there won't be any discussion between the Board and, and the public. But there won't be any discussion between the board and, and the public. Is that? Do you have a question, Brian?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing. Is there, anybody would like to make a statement regarding the proposed development?
Don't be shy.
I need to let my blood pressure go down a little bit.
Come on up so we can record you.
Come up, bring my so that it's recorded from the beyond.
This is my first meeting that I've ever been to. So my name is Ricky Redlin. I'm a property owner in the MOD Lodge HOA area. And I don't know when the public comment was opened for this project, but, but we missed it. So I have some questions and concerns, and a lot of my concerns have already been addressed by my co-property owners. But I am confused how you come up with one point five parking for this high of a density, multifamily, you know, most families are a two-car family. Our area now has restricted parking, even in our cul-de-sac, we can only handle in the driveways, no parking in the cul-de-sacs. So a lot of the BRBO people have to park on the street. I think they're gonna have a lot of overflow parking from this high-density, multifamily unit. The other question I have is if it's a multifamily unit, you're gonna have families with children. And so where, there's no area designated for park, open space, play. I'm not sure where, where they will go. We don't want them to overflow on our open space, which is right next to them. The other concern I have is storage. They have one and a half outside parking. So families have bikes, families have all kinds of stuff. And if you look at our Habitat project, which is really well-done, they have taken and actually built outdoor storage, like little units or little sheds that go with each property. And so it kind of keeps it nice and tidy. And aesthetically-wise, if you have that, bikes out in the back and toys and, and all of that kind of stuff, it's gonna affect the neighborhood. And I understand that we need affordable housing, that's, that's a given. But I think a fifth unit is really pushing the density and the, the bright lights where we have a night sky rule in the golf course. And in our subdivision, all lights are off after ten o'clock to have the night sky clause respected. That's not gonna be happening. It's gonna be like living next to a Walmart parking lot, I think, with the overhead lighting. So those are my concerns, just as a property owner. And I don't know if, you know, some of these have been addressed in the plan or not, but I have not heard that. And I think there are things to think about, even with just the, the units that have already been approved, how, how that will affect the whole neighborhood. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, my name's Rich Valley, at one-four-zero-six Lodge Lane, Unit One. I'm also the HOA president for my little community. Did anybody get an opportunity to just see the pictures that I took, that I submitted with my email? I saw the handouts, but I didn't see the, the pictures that I took.
I don't think I printed the pictures, one was picked up in the road.
Yeah, it was multiple, okay. So the first picture was from Friday, and it shows the, the long axis of going north-south along Silver Circle, and the new development proposes on the right-hand side. There's not a car there, except for the one lone vehicle that belongs to the construction folks that are laying the foundation. That's pretty much how it looks, uh, most of the time. We do have five Airbnbs within our eleven-unit community. And that said, there's a ton of overflow that, that long access will frequently have two, three, or four vehicles, and not just little vehicles, like the Ford F-150s that everybody drives, right? And we've had problems in the past, just from the overflow parking, where Elkin Pine could not get access to our back, to the back area to dump the snow, because about forty percent of our snow gets shoved into our front yards. And after that, the remaining sixty percent gets kicked out along that access, where we push it over in, into our property. But we've had to not get plowed because there's cars there. And that's kind of how it is today, particularly in the winter months. So I, I'm reading the tea leaves, looking into the future, and doing the stubby pencil math of how many realistically, how many overflow vehicles will, will result from this new development. There won't be a parking space in sight. There's just, there's no doubt in my mind about that. And that being said, I'm just wondering how the heck we're gonna get access to our dump sites on our own property, because there's only one way in, and that's from that long access. And if there's bumper-to-bumper cars, you know, pardon my parlance, but we're, well, I won't say it, but we're not gonna be in a good place. So a lot of the other concerns have been addressed, but this, as the HOA president and having to pay the bills for my own little community, I don't, I don't, I can't feature how we're gonna be able to dump our own snow. And outright snow removal is cost prohibitive for any HOA. All right, thank you. So that's what, that's my unit number one on the right. Of course, the, the development's right in my backyard, literally. And the next picture is, if you can, so if you can see what Elpine and everybody else does, they just shove it into our, I mean, on really good snow, you can't even see out your, your, your front door. I mean, you literally, it's six feet high, it's seven feet high. And then all the overflow has to go out. If you could please go to the next picture? And there it goes. So I was made aware that there's a, there's an ordinance issue where no snow on a property is supposed to be removed from the property and being relocated to another property. But truly, that's the only way. We have to, we use Silver Circle and then we, we shove it up, up on the berm, and then it topples over. But it, and this development goes through, whether it's four units or five, that long access on both sides is gonna be packed with cars. There's just no question about that. So that's my main concern. Thanks.
Hello there, I know a couple of you guys. My name's Doug Jones, I live at fourteen-oh-nine Silver Circle, so directly across from this complex. And I have broader concerns besides just this one, but I'm part of the nine that are across the street from there, you know, individual units. And you folks are always embattled with a couple different people. You have the single-home builders, wanting to build their homes, sometimes modestly, sometimes huge. And that's just a passive income. They're, they are, they're gonna own that home, and they're gonna live in it and, you know, come here every couple of week, you know, couple of weeks a year. Now you're dealing with an investment builder. And I've been in this industry a long time. So now this is an investment builder who's gonna control the unit, all twenty units, not gonna be for sale. And so you, you always think about, is it gonna be a, a neighbor that you like? So when we heard about this going down, which was very abruptly a week ago, or two weeks ago, sort of like if I went away for the, for a weekend and I came home and there was an eight-foot fence on my property, no permitting, and this was purely, in my opinion, don't ask permission, ask forgiveness, because that first building's done. That's laid, that's laid out. Nobody in our, in our whole area knew that this was even happening. And as far as construction standards, you know, let every, let every contractor in town know that now they can just pour a slab and don't need to do footings, because all you have to claim is that you have some water table issue. And then you get away from twenty grand worth of land foundations in a crawl space. So you're opening up a can of worms on that end. So, yeah, we talked about the, the parking and all that. But I, this, these are tw- this is gonna be twenty units, is that correct? Or twenty-five?
Twenty.
Twenty. So if you go down that swath of land, I'm assuming there's gonna be, if this gets approved the way it is, there's gonna be a hundred and twenty-five apartments there. Because there's already people walking those properties, and they're looking to see what happens here. The realtors are paying attention to here. Because if all of a sudden you're allowed to pack things in and build everything on a slab, then it pencils out very favorably to the builder. And again, is it, is it a neighbor you want? You know, is it an individual unit? Yeah, you can, there's pressure applied, maybe from the local HOA, which I'm part of, my wife is the president of ours, but she couldn't handle coming here, she'd be too, too hot. So, so with that calculation, a hundred and twenty-five apartments on that swath of land, not just this one, you'll have at least two hundred extra cars on that, on that road alone. And then besides that, there's no fencing allowed on the, with the Country Club of States, there's no fencing allowed. And you have that ditch, this, if, if that whole area goes to apartments, you have that ditch running strong the whole year during the summer, and I can guarantee you there's gonna be some mishaps, because that's where the kids are gonna be playing. So, you know, do I want a good neighbor? Yes, we all do. But by doing apartments, you're giving up that hope, because it's an investment builder now, it's an investment property. That's my two cents worth. Appreciate your time. And I know, you know, I appreciate you guys doing this, because you're always embattled with people like me, you know, coming to these things. So I appreciate what you do. I wish that there was better communication, and it's twofold, not just from being, from the city, but my work with HOA. I mean, my HOA didn't, didn't contact anybody that this was even in the works. So that's who I'm really peeved at, is my local HOA up there, that they approved this, and they approved apartment, because if this goes apartments, that whole swath is gonna be apartments. And I know there's other big projects in the line, which are all under wraps until everything's all buttoned up, then it just goes. So that's my three minutes, I probably went over. So appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Brad Kaden with the Red Lodge Area Community Foundation. What I'm seeing here is in a, an opportunity for some affordable, attainable rentals. Our 2022 housing study identified sixty units across the county of affordable or attainable rentals for us to just kind of tread water with our workforce. So a twenty-unit development, if successful, it's about roughly what Red Lodge would need for one year to tread water. And that's for your specific workforce housing. Advocates or supporters for these units aren't here because they don't live here yet. We don't have assisted living anymore. We're the worst county in the state of Montana for underage two childcare. We do not have residences to staff our positions and our critical positions and our critical jobs in our local area and in the broader county. So that, the, the, the assisted living center person or the childcare center person, they're not here to advocate for this, because they don't live here yet. So I, I think it's exciting, especially if it's gonna be committed to long-term rentals, and it's gonna be at a price point that will allow members of the workforce to actually live here. That's an exciting opportunity with a builder that's well-established, apparently long-term track record. So I urge you to strongly to consider the proposal.
Thank you, Brad. Any more comments in the room? Are there any comments online?
No comments online, Mr. Chair.
All right, going once, any more comments in the room? Twice? All right, public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the table. I guess I was going to ask Jeremy to maybe address a little bit of the concerns that we heard about parking and, uh, snow removal in terms of how this proposal will address those issues?
Sure, I can certainly do that. So I, I pulled up the site plan on, on the screen again. I, the applicant had kind of discussed those things in her presentation, but the, the zoning regulations have a set of requirements for, um... So the zoning regulations have requirements for parking. So we can't deviate from those requirements, right? So we can't require more parking, and we can't require less parking unless they get a variance. So currently, the zoning regulations require one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit for this kind of development. And they have provided that. And you can see from the site plan here, they've provided those parking spaces internally to the property. So they comply with the Red Lodge zoning regulations. They have provided bike racks also, as required by the zoning regulations. They have also shown, you know, they have this twenty-five-foot set, rear setback that is open space utilized for stormwater drainage purposes, as well as landscaping, and they are showing snow storage area. There could also be areas in the, you know, there's a twenty-five-foot setback from the front property boundary as well, which there could be additional snow storage areas in here. And then you can see at the front of all the buildings, they're set back from the parking and those, there, there are areas, you know, in there that could also be used for snow storage. But they have identified, as required by the zoning, an area to store snow on their I can't, is there anything else that I'm missing?
Lighting was also mentioned. And I was, in the staff report, there was some reference to meeting commercial standard versus residential standard.
Correct. So in the, in the staff report, we, we noted that there was some discussion of providing some bigger commercial-style lighting. In our staff report, we indicated that they would not be able to do that, they would have to provide residential standard lighting. If they did not, if they wanted to move forward with the more commercial standard lighting, they would have to request a variances, this is not a commercial development. And so if they choose to, they, they would have to come back to the Board of Adjustment and request a variance from the lighting standards to correct, require, or to allow for more lighting than the residential standard. Does that make sense? So there, there's a condition that they're gonna be required to provide a lighting plan to the city that shows compliance with the residential standards that are in the zoning regulations prior to further development.
If, it's in my understanding that the golf course also has a night sky restriction, how does that play into, into this?
The city of Red Lodge cannot enforce private covenants. That is not, that is not within our purview. Those are private agreements between private landowners. And so the city of Red Lodge does not do that. That, that is up to the applicant to work with those covenants and those HOAs to comply with those standards. The only thing that we can enforce as a city is our zoning regulations.
All right, thanks. Perry, do you have a question?
Jeremy, the, the lighting that was used in an example in this, in the Jeremy, the, uh, the lighting that was used in an example in this, in the plan, staff plan, is, was that your, your choice of those pictures or was that from the Schwinn?
No, that was provided with the application from the applicant.
And were those, those are not? Those aren't acceptable or they are acceptable?
Uh, the staff report indicates that they're not, they're, they're commercial compliant, but not residential compliant. So they're gonna have to provide a lighting plan to the city prior to building permits to show compliance with residential standards.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't clear on that, that's why I was asking, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions of Jeremy? Go ahead, Mary.
I don't know if Jeremy can answer these, but I've had several calls at office. So in terms of snow removal, and the president got up and left, but I believe you guys live in that area. So you have had an abundance of snow and it, it was going down that road on Silver Circle, correct? But didn't you not have to pay money to have it moved to another location this last year? Was that, is that true?
I think, uh, I think, I, I'm not the president, but yeah, I think that they have in the past. We had to have some, we had to pay extra.
To have the snow removed from the site?
I can comment on the snow up there.
Okay, 'cause I'm just curious, because I, it, it doesn't seem to me like there's gonna be enough space for the amount of snow we get.
And so, go ahead, Ryan. So up there, as infill happens, we, we're continually changing the way we plow. Right now, typically for that street, because there is nothing, the city takes everything from one side, rolls it across. As it infills, we go back to the half is yours, half is theirs. There's gonna be a berm, we're gonna make a berm on the road all the way through. Inside each of these subdivisions, whether it's a driveway or a big parking lot, it's their responsibility to either push it in the yard or lose what you can. We, we don't want you losing it on the street. Load in the yards, put it in big piles. If it gets to the point, which we have had years, that there's too much snow, then we recommend hire a dump truck and a loader. We give a huge space up at the
Bear Grove.
Up at the rodeo park to the, for everybody in town. You can haul all the snow you want there. This is, this is a battle all through the golf course. As, as it fills in, we're, we're now going, hey, you get your half of the street, you get your half of the street. We apologize that we push stuff in driveways and have to be cleaned out. For history, because there has been nothing there, all the snow has come out of the driveway, across the road, and then pushed onto neighboring properties. It's never been an ordeal because there's nobody there. Nobody's ever complained, there's never been a worry about it. As it infills, that's gonna change. So they can't take their snow and push it across
Right.
against the townhouses or against the mod lodge. Everybody has to deal with their snow on their property, even in town here. You don't get to take all your snow and put it out in the road or put it on your neighbors. You, you deal with it as best you can. City comes through and widens when we can, we try to, we've taken snow blowers up to the golf course. So it's, it's not isolated to that street that there's giant berms and, um, there's more up there because of the way that we plowed. But when that changes, it's gonna start going two directions.
And then where do people park then, in the winter?
It's, it's like everywhere, people get pushed farther out. I mean, even in town, Broadway, come drive in town, people get pushed farther out as snow comes. We still try to maintain clear paths through the roads, but you're gonna lose a couple feet. I mean, we push as hard as we can in that first ten feet of all the property, so we try to stay curb to curb. But as we lose that battle and it starts approaching out a couple feet, then, yeah, if, if people have to park, they're out a couple more feet. The, the roads are still wide enough that we can still get two lanes of traffic through with parked cars.
Yeah, we're talking about a lot of
Let's, uh, let's keep the conversation be-
Okay, yep, sorry.
Between staff and the planning board.
That was my question too, is, is that, yes, you'll get two lanes of travel, but you won't have parking. You know, will Silver Circle be curb to curb so that people can park outside of the development, outside of the mod lodges?
Well, we keep it as wide as we can. We push as hard as we can with, with our equipment. The Silver Circle is gonna change because in that area, half of it's now gonna go towards the townhome side. The luxury of all of it going to one side, that's so we're taking all of it and putting it on one side right now. When it splits, half of that's gonna be on this side, which is gonna create an issue for the townhouse people, but they'll have to, with their people that they hire to do it or how they do it, they'll have to pivot and figure out a different plan, how to deal with their snow out of their driveway.
And, and just to kind of feed on that, again, here in town, it's not like we get the luxury of them plowing the public right-of-way in front of our house because that's where we park. We have to go and do that ourselves as well, the same way that anyone, anyone sees public right-of-way, again, they take care of the roads, we can drive and they do a great job of that, but in terms of parking spaces.
We have to clear it ourselves.
We get to clear it ourselves.
It's like we do, they would have to do it themselves.
Exactly, and then, again, the, I mean, the smart way to be able to plow on that road, and I'm not telling you how to do your job by any means, but instead of plowing across all the driveways and building the wall up on Silver Circle where all the driveways are, instead going to the opposite side where these units are, where they both have, there's an in and an out, most of these have rounded parking areas and, you know, it's a little bit easier for them to get their plowing to clear that one drive-in versus fifteen on Silver Circle on the opposite side of the townhomes. So, anyway.
Perry?
I have a question from this Schwinn, if I, I may-
Sure.
It's my understanding that the east side, uh, adjacent to the golf course, I guess, that's all open.
Yeah, right now.
There's another vacant lot to, to that
To the north.
Left side.
Yeah.
It is, it was first sale as far as I know, a while ago. It is two acres, I believe. I think it's two acres, it was twice the size. But it's the only other vacant lot on that entire strip.
Their town over here.
Yeah.
So like this area back here, where you, you don't have any parking spaces. This is your snow, snow pile plant.
Right.
I just, that's, I just wanna bring it back to that. 'Cause that's what the conversation is, there's no, it's not gonna look anything like the mod lodges next door, because there's snows all going back there. And that, that, that's a large area and that will hold a lot of snow.
But again, to stay constant with our ordinance, like they can't just plow it all out into the golf course.
No, no, they're, they have a twenty-five-foot
They've got lots of room.
They got a lot of, lot of square feet back there. And it's, it's not gonna be in individual piles, and they, and they still have. You do have parking blocks in here, but they still could bring it here and here and here, I mean, out to the street.
And cul-de-sac doesn't have that often because they built houses.
Well, I know that, but that's not the issue that we're trying to address here. That, that's mod lodge's issue, that's not the, the potential apartment issue. Can I address that, that part? On the, you call it mod lodge, is that where we live, Ricky?
Yeah.
I've never heard it called that. But the cul-de-sac, on each side of the cul-de-sac, like where the president that was here lives, he lives right behind that first one. And there's a big area there that we put a lot of the snow. There's another one on the other side, behind the building. There's a, there's a lot of places to put snow and they fill it up. And it gets, we have to live for more places for snow. Well, there's, there's other developments in town and that snow has to go, that snow gets hauled away. I mean, that's, that's a homeowner's
Hold it.
Yeah, and then we have
Hold it.
Wait, wait a minute.
Yeah.
The discussion is at this table, it is not with the audience. It's gonna be between the table, the developer, the planner, and, and Brian. So the public had its opportunity to make its comments. We heard your comments and now we're trying to address those.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to clarify a word. See you later.
Go ahead, Perry.
No, I, it's, the snow removal, you know, they have their HOA, that's their issue. That's not, has nothing to do with, with the proposal on the table tonight.
Well, we do require snow storage. That's what we require. We require them to store their snow
Right, or they
On their property.
Or they haul it away.
Yeah, exactly.
And when you run out of storage, you
And I was wondering, um, these swales that you have next to each building, the little butt, um, I mean, obviously you could store snow there when they're not running. I'm wondering if they're, the swell is how deep? And is it cut off on the side so that when there's water in there, it doesn't run onto the neighboring properties or across the driveway? So how deep is that swell?
So the current design is three feet deep. So five feet wide and three feet deep, seventy feet long, which will hold the storage capacity of what's coming out of each building and the parking lot. So they'll be, it'll be filled with rocks so that, which helps with the absorption of that water. So the, if they were to overflow, I mean, that's, that's daily job, the engineering company, they have to design it so that it doesn't overflow, but I understand your concern about.
Overflowing on neighboring properties, especially the ones in the front of the buildings or across the driveway and creating ice. So I was wondering where the, where that stormwater goes. I had, the sidewalks are, are rated for three feet across. That's not much of a sidewalk, frankly.
Thirty-six inches?
Thirty-six inches, yeah, a yardstick.
Three feet and, I mean, for a residential sidewalk.
And when they plow, chances are those sidewalks aren't gonna be there at all. Because that's, snow from the parking area is gonna be all over the sidewalk. But that's their thing as well. I see that of the one and a half, you've got three that's handicapped. Because I was, we were told that, um, three of the buildings are ADA accessible. How does a two-story building become ADA accessible?
Cause it's two buildings downstairs and two buildings upstairs. So the ADA will not be on the upstairs.
Not upstairs, downstairs, yeah.
It'll be a downstairs unit.
And they're just wider hallways?
Yeah, and, and, and the building code we require. And then when, when you do an ADA unit, you can either do it as an A or a B. An A is a, a one that's easily transitioned, so a door cabinet can come off. Um, or a B is fully ready. So, yeah, so it'd be a little bit wider doors, wide enough hallways. But in residential, that thirty-six inches meets that requirement.
Okay. I didn't see anywhere in here the square footage of the units. First three bedrooms, two baths.
They're a thousand fifty square feet.
Thousand fifty square feet. Wow. So our only, um-
Eleven thirty-four, I'm sorry.
What is it?
We had adjusted the size because we wanted specific sizes for each of the bedrooms and the living room. And so I had to make some final adjustments. So it is eleven thirty-four.
Eleven thirty-four. So the zoning allows for four units. And you wanna do five, so that's the only thing that we are discussing tonight. I know that one of the gentlemen was surprised about this lot that's across the street from them on Silver Circle, which has been on the market for more than five years. So, um, and same with the one next to it as well. So I was surprised that he was surprised because it's been there for a very long time.
I think there's two
Can we, can we clarify something? Can, can I clarify something too that you said? So the, the R4 zoning allows for, for four dwelling units by right. So that means that it doesn't need a conditional use permit. Brian can issue a building permit, zoning permit for those four, for the, for four units. Anything over four dwelling units requires a conditional use permit. So i- i- and it just cat, the only thing that really caps that is the density requirements, the, the minimum lot size that we have in our zoning that's required per dwelling unit. So they meet that requirement. They, 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 they meet those minimum lot size requirements. And so, um, it's not building, it's not, we, we don't allow four buildings by right. And then the fifth one, this, like the fifth one is an extra one, where it's four dwelling units.
And so we're looking at twenty dwelling units, is that correct?
Correct. That's why this has to come to a conditional use permit in front of, in front of the planning board because they're proposing more than four dwelling units.
I have a comment.
Sure.
So Jeremy, in the definition of the zoning regs, that it states for R4s that six to, between nine and sixteen units are encouraged. Nine and sixteen dwelling units are encouraged in the R4 zoning.
That, that is just, that is just in the intent and purpose section of R4. What, what governs is the actual minimum lot size requirements per dwelling unit. So as long as you meet the minimum lot size requirement per dwelling unit, that's what governs.
So the mod lodge just had to go through all this as well, to have eleven dwelling units, right? Which I assume that
And there was opposition, right?
Myrna, you have some questions?
I just had, so, and I don't know that this has anything to do with what we need to decide, but the phone calls and good neighborly outreach, maybe, I don't know. But, um, it, you say that it's family, a single family, but mo- most likely there'll be a roommate situation. And ha- is there gonna be somebody that checks the site frequently? I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm afraid of the cars parked along the, the street and just for safety reasons almost. But, um, just to keep the routiness down, I guess, in that area. I mean, I've had questions given to me.
Of property management? Yeah.
So is there a regulation on how many cars that can pass on the street?
Public.
Just to clarify, I think what she's specifically asking about is what is the management plan for the property? Is it going to be, is there gonna be onsite management? Is there gonna be regular monitoring? Or is it going to be file an application, get in, we show up when there's a problem?
So it's professional property management and it will expand over time as the buildings are developed. So the first building is just, you know, just a four unit. It will be, I mean, with as much maintenance that it will take for the lawn care, the snow care, and even the golf balls hitting the windows, right? There's, um, our plan is to have regular inter- interaction with the tenants. I do, I don't know if you saw the intro when I, on the application, but we've, we have over twenty years of experience in managing multi-family. So we definitely understand that concern from all of the neighbors. Like it, it's a fear factor, um, being afraid of, you know, this wild community coming in and moving over. Our vetting process requires very distinct requirements like a traditional property management company would require, you know, income verification and credit report and background checks and all those sorts of things. We do also have, I mean, just from experience, uh, you, you have to be onsite regularly and have a presence there so that even if it's just, you know, fixing a lock or making sure that the garbage bin lid is closed or things like that. So that will definitely be in place for this project because it's, you have to stay ahead of it or else it starts to snowball and then it gets out again. I appreciate that, thank you.
I understand the concern for the parking and I, I too am rather concerned with that parking. For twenty units and thirty parking spaces, there's gonna be probably forty cars. And I didn't, I didn't see anywhere in our pack- And I did, I didn't see anywhere in our packet that there was an approval from Red Lodge Country Club Estates. And I don't believe they allow parking on the streets. You drive through the coun, the golf course, you just don't see cars parked on the street, at least while it's not overnight. And so, I wanted to make sure that, that they were aware of the parking situation. And I don't know if, you know...
I don't think that's their prerogative, I think that's their prerogative.
Well, they have to be approved. And I don't know.
Yeah, but again, that's private. So, I, I'm, again, I'm going to say that, that is, those are private covenants. Those are private regulations by an HOA. The city of Red Lodge has no purview over those private, those private regulations or those private covenants. We can only enforce our zoning, our ordinances. So, we, we don't have an obligation to request or, or, we, we don't have, we can't require that they provide us with HOA approval, right? We, because we can't do anything with that. Even if the HOA said, "We're not going to approve it," that's not within our wheelhouse as a city to, that's between the applicant and the HOA. We, we are not part of that.
I advise going forward every day in their car park.
That's a good thing.
I just haven't seen that. I mean, Brian or Jeremy, the one can, can answer this, but our current requirement is for one and a half parking places.
Yes, on October first, it actually changed to one.
Okay, but well, the, the time that this, the application was made, it was, and I guess if we wanted to address, adjust that going forward, that's up for us to do at a later time. But right now, that's where we are.
That's true.
Yep.
We can't require two.
Yeah.
And I'm not a building person, so what was the problem with the slab?
Nothing. See, every, every mod lodge house is on a slab.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought...
It's actually becoming a very common practice. It's called a shallow foundation, yep. There's insulation requirement, you know. I mean, the footer on that thing is two feet by two feet thick. Two feet thick, two feet deep, all the way around. That's what the building is going to stand on.
That's why I...
Mod Lodge and Silver Circle all are slabs. Well, a lot of places are on slab, that's why I didn't understand the, the issue with the slab.
The free flow.
Well, my question, my question related to that is why has construction, why is there an existing slab there before?
Because I cannot deny a building permit for permitted use.
Yep.
For four units.
So, when, and we had this conversation that you can, you are permitted through our zoning to build one fourplex. You can build it. If something happens, you're going to have to pivot, you'll have one fourplex on this land. Nothing else can start until this is through. So, I can't deny the permit based on, well, you know, we're not sure. I just can't, I can deny the next permit for, to go over that four, but that fourplex is a permitted use in R4.
Even with a parcel that's this size, that the intent is going to be for more than a fourplex?
Yeah, I mean, you know, they could start it with the middle one. I want to buy, I'm going to buy this lot, I'm going to put a single-family house on it. I mean, it's, it's, whatever is a permitted use, that's, that's where, I mean, I, I give that permit.
One other comment, I think was already mentioned, the adjacent properties are also sizable. They're not like individual city lot size. And so, we're going to have to deal with this again because nobody's going to buy two acres and put one unit on it. It just doesn't make any economic sense. Uh, not in that neighborhood in particular, you're not going to build your dream home there.
We need it.
We need it, we need it. And end of the day, all those surrounding lots, well, that's what our zoning allows for, all of those surrounding lots have more than four dwelling units or parcels.
Yeah.
I mean, you have Silver Circle, you have the mod homes, you have the further down with the other Pine Drive. I, I mean, that whole stretch. I, I, I don't know why it's being taken as a surprise when you have these lots there. They're zoned for this intent. So, to me, it's, I'm very excited about this.
I mean, one, one issue is most of those, I mean, you have rentals in there, but the majority of those are, are owners, are owned by someone and they may do, do short-term rentals, but they're not. And there's just a stigma against it. To me, I think there's a stigma against, um, apartment dwellers. And no matter where we put apartments in town, that's going to be an issue.
Yep, and end of the day, if they have their concerns with what is happening within their own HOA, that is the HOA's prerogative. Again, I, I manage both short-term and long-term in that whole area right there. And we've had more issues with our long-term tenants that have been there versus our short-term. But that being said, again, we, we have regulations in place for those long-term folks requiring you can only have X amount of vehicles, all of those people. So, I mean, those are things that you can put into place and it's on the owner to do, not necessarily the city.
I guess, one question I had, and it goes back to, I understand that the city doesn't have any role with the HOAs, but my question is, have you reached out to the HOA, to Red Lodge Country Co, Club Estates and address the fact that they have lighting restrictions up there as well as some of the other, other issues associated with the HOA?
So, we, um, as owners of the lot, we join the, as members of the Country Club Estates. The Red Lodge Country Club Estate organization has now, the way they explain it to me, they've taken over all of the state joints or all of the properties in that. Um, so, yes, we are members now. We talk to them about all the same items. Now, they don't require all these same items, but I went through all the details with them so they could see the vision, the lighting, the landscaping, the storm drainage, all of the parking. Um, I did have in my application, um, the possibility of having the dimmable lights and/or the timed, timed timers on them. But that's what I need to check with Jeremy on, if that is technically considered a commercial product. It's having a dimmer or a timer, okay. So, I struggle with that, I'll be honest, because I feel strongly about safety for people living there. But if the regulations tell me, and I don't, I studied those and I couldn't find anything on lighting that has to be shut off at ten PM. It might be something that's new or they just didn't, I just didn't catch that. I can revisit with them about if, are you guys, can you confirm that or do you know?
I think it can't exceed the property boundary.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to have me or Brian address that.
No, I'm, I was curious, I don't know.
There's, there's actually multiple HOAs and they're part of all of them. So, there's the Country Club Estates HOA, which they are a part of, which is who you've got the letter of approval from.
Right.
And then, lots of those others have little mini HOAs there. And the mini HOAs at the parcels next door have no bearing beyond the boundaries of that little mini HOA. So, that's why there's some of the things that they're talking about just within that one.
Wait, what about the lighting aspect? Is that overall Red Lodge Country?
I, I don't think that's Country Club Estates.
I've never seen a lighting deal.
What's that?
I've never seen a lighting deal in the HOA, read through it several times and...
No.
And so, if, if there's a little HOA that says, "We all turn our lights off at ten o'clock," that's that little, you know, but the rest of the, so of course, they have lights on their front doors, they have lights on their driveways.
The only reason I mention that is that was an issue with Alpine Basin by people that were living at Red, Country Club Estates. And that came up, that Red Lodge Country Club Estates is kind of night sky friendly as a general statement.
Yeah.
But that's why I asked the question relative to, to if that, if that's universal across Red Lodge Country Club Estates or not, or if it's more individual.
And ultimately, that was in the letter of approval that they offered that says, "Hey, this meets our requirements." I don't, I, to Jeremy's point, from a city standpoint, we don't want to get in the position of defending their regulations. We can't.
I, I have a question for Jeremy, because Jeremy, my recollection is when we first started this, you said one of the first things we needed to do was, um, have a motion to accept your staff report.
Correct.
That, yes, that's correct. Yeah, so there'd be two steps. There'd be a motion to adopt or nod it off the staff report and findings affect.
I would like to make that motion that we adopt the staff report as, as presented.
I, I think, I'd like to go through the conditions first.
Well, I mean, with, oh, do you want to review the, do you think conditions?
Well, typically, typically what we've done is, and, and we can change, but, but typically, we've gone through and addressed all the questions that the board has had.
Sure.
And then, if there's any questions relative to the conditions we've discussed that, at that point, then we have generally entertained the motion to accept the staff report as amended or, or, uh, or as is.
I am amenable to that one hundred percent.
And I actually have a couple of questions on the staff report too.
Yeah, so if you're okay with that?
No, no, let's, let's get, get to the condition part and the questions on the staff report, because I think we talked the rest of it to death and we'd like to get this done tonight.
What, really? Okay. My question on the staff report, page eight, item E, under conclusions, says, "Subject to the aforementioned conditions of approval, the proposal for an apartment complex development should have minimal impact on adjacent landowners and residents." And I'm a little concerned with what we've heard tonight, both with snow and insufficient parking, according to the neighborhood and their experience even with, uh, the mod lodge development, um, which is certainly not, uh, twenty dwelling units. I think it's seven?
Eleven.
Eleven, eleven dwelling units. And we're proposing tw, almost twice as many. And they already have issues with their parking. And, and they actually have garages and driveway parking. So, I'm not sure that E is accurate, that's one. On page nine, under A on the conclusions at the top, it says that the staff concludes, and this is probably for you, Jeremy, that the proposed development is similar in scale to neighboring properties and consistent with the existing buildings. Uh, the character and appearance requirements of the, uh, review criteria are met. Proposal's not in conflict with neighboring properties. There is not any neighboring properties where there's more than one dwelling unit within a building. Everything on Silver Circle, Mod Lodge, all the way down, those are all standalone dwelling units. Where, where are their...
Elk Park is fourplexes.
Which one?
Elk Park is fourplexes.
Which is further down the road.
Right across the street.
But not adjacent.
Directly across the street.
Across the street.
A lot of those are, even across the street, it's Kitty Corner, there's fourplexes.
Kitty Corner.
Yep. But the ones right across the street are single-family on a big lot.
And the ones to the south, I guess that...
Our lot is a single-family.
Are all single-family, that's why I was trying to figure out.
So, there's, there's a mix.
I mean, I think the important thing, I, I think the important thing to, to take away from this though is we have a set of regulations that, that allows for certain things in R4, right?
Yeah.
The other lots were developed in a certain way that meet the R4 regulations. This lot and this proposal meets our requirements. It meets the density requirements. They're not exceeding the density requirements of the R4 district. And they're, they're meeting all the setback requirements. Um, you know, when, when the regulations were adopted, those, those things were set up in the regulations for seat, for R4 to offset any impacts to adjacent properties, right? That's, that's the whole point of zoning and that's the whole point of setbacks, density requirements, all of those things. So, when the zoning regulations were adopted, tho, those are the things that should have been considered i- in your R4 district. If they meet those requirements that you've set in your zoning dis, in your zoning standards, then there is a presumption that there is not going to be an effect on adjacent landlords. Does that make sense?
Now, it does. In five years, it won't.
There, there are fourplexes. And how, what size lot is each of those fourplexes on?
It's not a...
It's one giant lot.
It's one lot.
I don't know, I haven't figured it out. Well, I mean, but the current, current zoning regulation, actually, you could put a fourplex on a five thousand square foot lot plus the twelve hundred and fifty per addition unit.
In, if, in R4.
Right, in R4. And so, I mean, if you, and Jer, Jeremy referenced that, if you add it all up, uh, and the size lot that is, you can have, I mean, if those were, if you were looking at smaller lots, you can put a bunch of fourplexes side by side on, on each small lot. And, and, but we're talking about acres as opposed to, you know, a seven thousand, seventy-two fifty square foot lot. And I mean, there are areas up in the Country Club Estates area where there are fourplexes, multiple fourplexes within a one acre scope in, in, in area. And I mean, that, we, we, that's, that's the challenge here. We're dealing with a lot larger piece of land than, than we normally think of in those terms. And, and I, I, I guess I'm fully appreciative that there's going to be a lot of vehicles there. I, I don't, I don't know what we can do to change that because our standard is our standard.
Nothing at this point.
And anyway, I'm sending my piece.
Any other questions, Sandy?
No, I mean, I just was trying to see how this is going to look different than everything around it. And we've already heard the neighbors' concerns with parking and snow removal. I'm not so concerned about playing area for kids or outdoor storage. Um, the lights will be full cut off, so I can't see if the lights are going to exceed the, uh, the lot, the lot itself. So, I think I was okay with that. But I am, I am just concerned that we don't have enough parking for a three-bedroom, two-bath, giving it one and a half because you can't park a half a car there. That I, that you, well, actually, some of them are half cars, so, so, you know, that's...
Bike racks.
Yeah, there's the bike racks, which help in the summer.
Well, there's a lot of folks that have been riding their bikes in the winter, big fat tires. I've been seeing that a lot more. But I, I do just want to put a little perspective on this, if I may. Um, Mountain View Town Homes, they're at the top of the hill and that's six fourplexes is on about the exact same acreage. So, and I have a feeling, from what I see, it's going to be a very similar setup.
And they have poor parking too.
Not really. I spent a lot of time in that parking lot and I have never once had an issue finding parking.
Well, that's because there's so many that are owned out of state and they put them in the vacation rental market. But if somebody's living there full-time...
It's also a lot of folks that are just living there individually.
Some.
Yeah, so, again, I...
And those are all two and twos, they're not three and two.
I'm just saying, I'm not going to say that there's a parking issue there because I've yet to see one.
Yeah.
So...
That's what you're going to do.
And then, end of the day, that is something that could be addressed within the management if needed. Whereas you are allotted, and you see this a lot in many urban areas, where each place is allotted one designated parking space.
It's the designated.
Yeah. And that could be the solution if it ends up being an issue down the road. But I do think that's something that's on the homeowner and the HOA specifically to deal with.
Myrna, you have any?
I'm done, yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Any food?
Go for it, Jeremy.
I think she made a lot of good points, both of them. I think they've done very useful information, she was...
I have just probably two questions, I guess. One, a little bit more clarification on the lighting that you're talking about in terms of lighting, the parking area. Are those going to be full posted lights? Or are you thinking in terms of ballards that basically light the surface but don't?
That's a good question, really good question. Um, Jeremy says the ones I proposed are commercial, so I'm going to have to use that, the residential. But the plan was to put them on the corners of the building, ten feet up, because they will give off a circle twelve feet out. So, with the stairway that comes down, it comes down about nine feet outside of the front of the building, and then another three feet for sidewalk. So, we're just going to, I'm sorry, the downdraft is sixteen feet, because the parking was going to start at twelve feet. So, the light is supposed to come down to the first four feet of the parking lot. All of the faces of the buildings face internally? So none of them actually face any other property or the street? So, that should, that will help, because it's not going to be directly aimed at any of the houses next door. The small lighting along the sidewalk are like a landscape light, you know, like a little walkway light. They'll be twenty-four to twenty-eight inches off the ground. They have like a little, like a little cap, right? So it's all downdraft. They're only going to give off like an eighteen-inch type diameter, right?
So that, that's the ballards that I'm, was thinking, style. Okay.
I didn't want to put a bunch of light bulbs either. Like, you know, I, in depth, in that residential area, it doesn't make any sense. It would look bad, and even if, even though it'd be safer for the tenants, it would not be conducive to the environment or the atmosphere. So, we were trying to compromise with those two, the lights on the corners. But I need, I need to do the checking from what Jeremy said on the residential.
Jeremy, can you, yeah, can you clarify a little bit different, the difference between commercial and residential?
You would put me on the spot. Brian, I, maybe you can answer that one better than me. Maybe not.
Maybe not.
I, I, I mean, I thi- so my, my recollection from the regulations is, it's just a matter of, of, of lumens, really, right? So in residential areas, you just don't want, um, the, uh, you know, the intensity of the lighting. So it really comes down to height, lumens, that sort of thing, uh, between residential and commercial. And, and I can't, it, it just appeared, it, it appeared from the application they provided that the, that the lighting that they were proposing was more on the commercial side than the residential side. And so that's why we required as a condition a, a, a lighting plan to be submitted, so that we can verify that what they're, what they're proposing is residential and not commercial.
Okay, thanks. The other question I had was, there was some discussion in staff report about the one, uh, building that, that's in the center, where the backside is actually facing Silver Circle.
Yeah.
And there's recommendations in terms of, of having some design features that will make that, um, less of a, of a solid, solid wall. Maybe I'll address this to the you as well, in terms, what are your thoughts about how to break up that fifty-two-foot wall?
Good question. The exterior design right now is so that we have three distinct sections of siding, so, and with a vertical separation between them, which actually gives the appearance of like three townhomes or three different buildings next to each other. We also have the overstory. We have some overstories we designated for in front of that, to put in between the, like the, the sections of windows, um, which are the big, if I can remember the detail, is a shade of twenty-five feet after fifteen years. So it has to be a big one, which would distinctly break up the, that section of wall.
Have you thought about turning that building so that the front is actually facing Silver Circle, like some of the other duplexes that are further down, versus the front being towards the back?
Actually have not thought of that. The original design had it facing the first building, and we couldn't fit enough parking spaces in there doing that. So, if I turn it around, then I have to push it back towards the golf course in order to have the parking in front of it, which cuts me off for the.
I was thinking, I was thinking the parking would still stay where it is, and the, but it's just the front of the building would be, instead of facing interior to it, it would be facing Silver Circle.
But there's no back doors.
What?
There's no back doors on these buildings.
The people would be able to walk all the way around from their parking.
But, oh, that's part of the design, though, I guess. That's why I'm asking the question, is, can that structure be, be modified to where it would be a better fit, to where the front of the building was facing Silver Street, and you would have a door on the backside going towards the parking?
Jeremy, is there anything in our, does it, does the orientation of the building meet our zoning requirements?
Um, let me get to that, that, that discussion. So that discussion, it says, um, um, this building design, four-point-five-point, uh, one-ten, the building's sides facing the street, um, let's see, therefore, uh, for the third building is fifty-two feet long, so, eh, the, the regulations say, um, "The elevation views do not indicate any offsets in the wall plane. Architectural features are indents. And the applicant shall provide an updated elevation plan for review and approval to demonstrate compliance with this section for the fifty-two-foot building." So, I mean, basically with that, it just, so the regulations say that there should be offsets in the wall plane, architectural fe- features are indents, to break up that wall. So, I, I guess, our feeling right now with the information we have is that's why we have that condition in there, because we don't know if, if it will or not, right? So they have to provide that information, and then we can make that determination before our building permits issued. Does that make sense? Because right now, they're just, you know, they just show on their rendering or their drawing that, you know, they're just going to have the three separate, um, uh, sightings to, to break it up. But I don't know that that in itself meets the regulation.
Yeah, that's why I was asking the question, as they develop, further develop, go through the design and develop floor plans and all of that, is it, is it feasible to turn that building the other way? Is that a reasonable request?
That would be up, that would be up to the. That would be up to the applicant to propose that, uh, as, I don't know that the city wants to be in the position to require that. If they want to propose that to meet that requirement of the zoning, then that, that's up to them, or they could do something different with the back of that building to break it up that meets the zoning regulations.
Okay. Well, that was my question. I wasn't, I didn't mean to say, use the word "required." But request or suggest as, as you go forward, um, as a consideration. I guess that's all the questions I had. I did have some unconditional uses. I was thinking of some clarification and, or just asking first if we needed some clarification. Like, like condition four on lighting, uh, referencing the lighting section four-point-five-point-seven. In other words, just to reference that in, as part of the condition.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then also inserting where, to clarify a little bit more in that last sentence, "Final exterior lighting plan shall meet the residential requirements set, set to the zoning administration for res- for approval."
It's in the very first sentence, "shall meet residential requirement." What was the reference on that?
Oh, it's four-point-five-point-seven-zero is, is the lighting standard. Yeah.
So we have it, like, co- like Sandy said, we have that in the first sentence there. We say, "The lighting associated with the project shall meet residential requirements." Did you still want it in the last sentence as well?
No, that's good. Just as long as that's understood, I guess. I, I didn't read that first sentence closely enough. I was looking at the last sentence, on what would be submitted to the zoning administrator.
Hey.
I have a question for Brian.
Go ahead.
These buildings only have one door in or out. Does that need fire cones?
Four doors. Every unit has its own door.
It has one door?
Residential homes only need one, there's only one egress door in a residential home, that's front door.
Really? So if there's a fire in the front, they have no way to get out?
That's the egress door. But then every sleeping room is required to have an egress window with five-point-seven square feet.
Okay. Even at second story?
Yeah. Right. A sliding glass door on a residence does not meet egress requirements.
Sliding glass door doesn't?
Egress requirements have to be a side hinge door.
It's easier to get out of a sliding glass door than a window. Just saying. Okay, I was concerned that, that there was no back doors. But, you know, the building codes, I, I have no clue.
Yeah, that's with a back door on your house if you don't want to. Just kind of have a front door.
For, for condition nine, I was suggesting maybe all, in addition to referencing four-point-five-point-one-one-zero to also reference four-point-three-point-nine-four-G, which is, talks about residential appearance. Hey? Uh, four-point-three-point-nine-four-G, and that, that addresses residential appearance. Yeah, on condition twelve, there's mention to one fire hydrant. Is there going to be, um, does an additional fire hydrant need to be addressed as well, or?
They're adding an additional fire hydrant.
They're adding that?
They're adding one inside the complex. There's already one on Silver Circle.
So, so I guess then, for clarification, I would just state that as part of condition twelve, that, that a fire, additional fire hydrant will be?
It's on the sewer and water plan.
What's that?
It's on the sewer and water plan that was presented.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would say that's part of the engineering, public works review portion, not necessarily the planning side. But, I mean.
So you're saying, you're saying we don't, don't need to mention the additional fire hydrant in condition twelve?
No, I mean, I think by them, uh, coordinating with the fire department and public works, and that requirement has already been established, I think that, that, that's met.
Okay.
The one that's on the drawing is an existing fire hydrant?
Left-hand corner, yeah.
Left-hand corner?
There, that's actually on Silver Circle, and then there's one on four MOD Lodge. There's several along that stretch. But they're actually going to put another one inside the unit.
About where? Any idea?
Here, I, I will show you.
There we go.
So, here's, this is the utility plan for the site. The new fire hydrant is, well, and that's not quite right, because it's in the parking lot, but it, is this right, Brian?
Oh, new hydrant, see it.
So that's, I don't think that's the final spot for it.
That's the snow storage.
And we were going to get with Mike and fine tune all this stuff, but I think the fire hydrant's going to go across and be just in the grassy area, right off the park.
Right here. In front of the building.
Or Mike, towards the golf course, in the snow area.
In the snow storage area?
You can have it in the snow storage area and just keep it open.
Just can't bury it.
Just don't bury it.
A- anyway, these are things that are, you know, final details working out between the engineer and public works and the fire department, where that needs to be.
Okay. That's all I had. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Now, Perry.
Now?
Now?
You can, you can. Have a motion?
I, I move what Jeremy said earlier.
On page two. The verbiage.
Um, I can read. Thank you. I move to adopt the staff report, RLCU 2025, number two, as writing a fact.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second that.
All right.
And that, that's amending the conditions, correct?
Uh, amending condition nine and.
Four.
Two of them.
And four.
Nine and four.
And I'll second that.
We have both called, Jeremy?
Roberts?
Yay.
Uh, Gray is not there. Tupin?
Yes.
Did I say it right that time?
You did, thank you.
Echols Bell?
Yes.
Fauci? Is it, did I say that right?
No.
It's like noisy with an F.
Foicy? Foicy. Greg usually does this, so I'm, I'm winging it here.
You're doing a great job.
Was that a yes?
Yeah, it was a yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Dee Benedetto?
Yes.
I need another motion to approve or deny conditional use permit.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit. I'm trying, oh, here we go. I move to approve the conditional use permit, RLCU 2025-02, as amended, for a multifamily development to include five fourplexes located on Red Lodge, Country Club Estates Lot 108, Block Three, in Section 22 Township, oh, number seven, South Range 20 East, PMM, subject to the following condition.
Is there a second? Myrnus seconded.
Marnie.
Myrn.
Not Myrna, Marnie.
We like her.
Marnie.
You have to change your name.
I like Marnie. She's gotten some calls for me.
She lived with Marnie all her life.
Evroco?
Roberts?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
Echols Bell?
Yes.
I'm going to mess this up again. Fauci?
Boy.
Foicy? I cannot see him get that one. Conley?
Yeah.
Dee Benedetto?
Yes.
Hey, uh, looks like the CUP passed.
All right.
Thank you.
And I, I guess I'd like to make a comment. I, I was reading through the application that you submitted, and it was really thorough.
Very good.
Very good.
We don't, we don't see that thorough of a application usually, and that was really helpful. Addressed a lot of my questions that I had, reading through the staff report, so.
A builder, she could start a business, helping people with conditional use permit.
Yes.
And thank you, Jer.
Thank you, Brian.
And thank you, Jeremy, for. And thank you, Jeremy, for.
Filling in.
Great staff report.
I, I did my best, I best. Greg's shoes are hard to fill sometimes, so.
All right, uh, carrying on to any, uh, public comment on, well, it's. Twenty after, so. We probably won't move on to, uh, review the zoning regulation update, so. But is there any public comment? Um, any additional public comment in the room or online?
Mister Chair, I'm seeing no raised hands or unmuted mics online or comments in the conver- in the chatroom.
Okay. Uh, written correspondence, staff communication and updates?
Uh, we just have the CUP for. The, um. Oh geez, the name escapes me for the, the, Brian? What's the name of that one? Astro, right, sorry. Um, at the next planning board meeting. That, that has been, uh, notices, notices have been sent out and we will be presenting that at the next planning board meeting.
All right. Mayor, do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you all.
All right. No petitions and communications from the audience on any topic? Brian?
I just wanted, Jeremy, since you're on here, somehow come up with a clarification of both propane? Is there such a thing?
Uh.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, I, I think, well, I mean, I think what we talked about was we need, we probably need to add that to our list of zoning modifications. To better define, we have no, no definition for propane bulk and distribution in the zoning. Um, and so I think that's something that we just need to add to the list to make sure we address that. Um, that question did come up recently.
Okay.
All right. Do you think we'll have time to get back to zoning after the next BU review or?
I think it just depends. Yeah, I think we keep it on the agenda in case. I think it just depends on how much public comment and, you know, how much discussion the board has on the next one. Um. I, you know, I, I just, I'd like to keep it on there as a, you know, as, as an item, because we, we need to keep it, keep it on there, I think. Um, but yeah, I, it just depends.
All right. Uh, yeah, I just wanna, I didn't mean to do the outburst thing, but I had, had a sense this meeting was about ready to go out of control. Between discussion, between, between the table and the audience. And I thought I made it pretty clear upfront that. Once the public comment is closed, everything comes back to the table and we don't engage in the public back and forth anymore, so. But I hated to see them leave because I thought I, I think that probably gave them the re- the bad impression that, uh, we weren't addressing their concerns. And I thought that we actually did address their concerns pretty well, so.
Well, you chewed me out. Everybody should have, no.
I tried to address all the concerns, so I wrote those down so that we would discuss it.
You did.
So did I, and that's why I made a point of, of doing that.
Yeah.
And I do think it's important that we do hear the public when they do take their time to come.
Absolutely.
So, with that, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, every, thanks everyone.